Council meeting. I'm showing that it's 7:37 PM. Ms. Sarsisi, will you please call the roll?
This is yours.
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Ms. Hannekin?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
And Mrs. Tully?
Here.
All right. I would like to ask everyone to stand, please. It's Council President Dave Engel leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance and after that, Jan Tully will say tonight's invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hate no one, no matter how much they've wronged you. Live humbly, no matter how wealthy you become. Think positively, no matter how hard life is. Give much, even if you've been given little. Keep in touch with the ones who have forgotten you and forgive those who has wronged you. And do not stop praying for the best for those you love. This Sunday is Father's Day. We need to keep our fathers both here and those who have left us in our hearts. And on Saturday is Flag Day, a way to honor our country. Thank you.
This evening, we have a couple of proclamations. And we're going to start with more honors for our WWII veterans. Fred Dan, would you like to stand, please? While I read this? This is good, Fred. No? All right. Whereas seventy years after Allied troops invaded the beaches at Normandy, dogfighting Japanese heroes over the Pacific or battling their way through the Black Forest, WWII veterans gave their youth to the defense of American freedoms. And whereas these men waged a war so that we might know peace, they sacrificed so that we might be free. They fought in the hopes of a day we would no longer need to fight, and we are grateful to them. Now therefore, I Donald Cook, the mayor, do hereby proclaim this 12th day of June in the year of 2014 as D-Day, Remembrance Day. It is because of the heroes that we live in the land of the free and the home of the brave. Thank you, guys.
Can you make me come in?
Sure. I don't know if we can hear you, but go ahead.
They are, and always will be, the greatest generation on this planet. But they're more than that. They're the most giving generation on this planet because of what they...
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. John, could you get Brandon out of there, please? We have a young man from Nordonia High School that you never see. He's here all the time for all of our meetings, making sure that it's being taped properly for you to watch. And tonight, I'm going to put him on the spot a little bit, but when you hear this, you'll know why. Brandon, meet me right here.
Right here.
I'll tell you what. This one's a nice young man. Do you ever want to meet in your life? Never complains and works hard. But he does other stuff, too. So I would like to read a proclamation for our Nordonia High School State Championship team. Whereas, congratulations to the Nordonian Knights Boys Track Team who won their first state championship in the history of Nordonia at Ohio State's Jesse Owens Memorial Stadium in Columbus on June 7. Whereas, we know that a special commendation is due Coach Scott Brawdy and all of the team members who participated in the Division One State Champions Eight Hundred Relay Team. Junior Thalen Maven, Seniors Brandon Truitt, Sterling Bradson, and Jordan Oles. Whereas, we salute Brandon Truitt today for his four-year letter track and field, two-time Ohioan, his participation in the 100 and 200 meter relay at state championship, and his Division One Boys 400 meter relay team took place at the state. Therefore, I now Donald Cook, the mayor, do hereby extend this expression of pride in your accomplishments and our appreciation for the fine publicity you and your team and relay members have brought to our community by your good sportsmanship and inspired team play. I'm very proud of you, Brandon. Thank you. Next on the agenda is comments by the public. A couple of things, we ask you to sign in if you would like to speak. So I have a list here of those people who are going to speak tonight. We ask you to try and keep it to five minutes. And if you would please come to the front microphone on the other side of Joe there and give us your name and your address. So the first name on the list is Bill Jenkins. Bill?
My name is Bill Jenkins and I live at 1459 Bonnie Road in, oh yeah, Macedonia. I've been at a few of the meetings recently, particularly because of my concern about my own road. The fact that my wife had fallen on this road and was injured at one point. We did receive help from the Services Department regarding some of its repair, but there's still problems there in terms of that road. In attending the meetings and reading the newspaper and talking with a variety of people, I have a number of observations about road and road repair in Macedonia. Number one, our roads are in horrible shape. Beyond just the two that are going to possibly be acted on tonight, and they should be dealt with, there are at least 32 that are poor and host more that merely fair. And they're getting worse. They're not getting better. Okay? Second observation about that, those roads. Estimates are that it costs, on the average, about $1 million a year over 20 years to keep up road repair in Macedonia. Now, that may change over time. Obviously, there's some estimate to it. But overall, it's clear that is there a significant and large amount of money that needs to be spent each year in regard to road repair. Now, whose responsibility is this? It's local government. Local government, not the federal government, not the state government. Local roads are the city's responsibility. And yet, we are falling behind. What I have observed so far has been an attempt to piecemeal it, or at least the last several years, to piecemeal it. Do we have enough money somewhere else? Is money coming in in addition to the amount that we received so far? More money than we thought would come in. Those amounts of money are nowhere near equalling $1 million a year that needs to be invested in our roads. So where are we in terms of this? I am an advocate for something permanent. Something permanent. Could be an increase in the income tax. It could be a permanent improvement level. But there is an absolute need, just as we deal in our households with expenses that are coming up and we set aside money in order to pay for those things that we know we will Local government needs to follow that example. They need to follow that example. They need to pass something permanent or put something on the ballot that's permanent that will meet the need because roads are an essential in terms of safety and secondly, in terms of property values. People who come in and look at homes will not be happy with some of the streets, and it will affect purchase price and perhaps purchasing at all. So we are at a crisis point, as far as I'm concerned. And I am hoping that within the short period of time, there will be some permanent solution that is arrived at relative to the roads in Macedonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right. Next, we have Fred Quigley. Fred?
Fred Quigley, 8581 Alexis Drive. This is my third presentation to the city. Mr. Mayor, I personally appreciate what you attempted to do at the last meeting of council. It showed some respect for what the military has done for the city and for America. But was it hypocritical? There still seems to be a total lack of concern, interest, or compassion for a few of the residents of the city. It seems that there is more interest in the developer, Mr. Miglerini, and the contractor, Chris Coblenz, than that of the well-being and respect of the residents of the city. For example, Memorial Day, a day of respect and remembrance for our military, what the military has done for us. Yes, it is a day of remembrance. Those who gave their lives for the freedoms we cherish. This is the banner that's over my garage in Memorial. I wonder how Mr. Miglerini feels about that. The banner has two flags on it. Mr. Miglerini has stated that he considers the showing of the American flag as being a mere decoration, unsightly and a detriment to the appearance of the development. I ask, is this sign also unsightly and a detriment? I still can't believe that Mr. Miglerini, who has never served in the armed forces, is so unpatriotic that he would make such an assessment. Does he feel the same way about the city putting up flags on Memorial Day in the city? And speaking of Memorial Day, it seems awfully cross-pressed for contract workers working for Mr. Miglerini and Chris Coblenz to schedule construction in the housing area on Memorial Day to disrupt the tranquility and the reverence of some of the residents who believe in Memorial Day. Memorial Day, I was awakened at 7:00 AM with the noises of voices and hammers. I went on and asked them if they had any respect for the day, but as usual, nobody cared. Well, I care, for I would have gone out, I wouldn't have gone out to talk to them if I didn't. And additionally, they blocked part of my driveway with their trucks and trailers. They dumped gravel over half of the street, making it harder for traffic. They used two-by-fours framing for concrete driveway. This is an apron, not a sidewalk. Over the waterline, they used a base just a little gravel. The city inspector says all it takes is a four-inch pad. Nothing else is important. I sure hope the inspector is right. We don't need shortcuts and cost savings by the developer and the contractor. But that wasn't the worst thing that happened. When I went out and asked the supervisor and the Amish workers if they had respect for the day, the response was, with a smirk and a smart aleck attitude, "It's just another working day." And the supervisor said, with smugness, disdain, and a big smile on his face, and I quote, "That we had all the rainy days this spring to celebrate Memorial Day." Basically, he was telling me to go fly a kite. My thoughts are a little different. One, he doesn't deserve to live in America if he can't respect its past, the sacrifice made on his behalf, and what the military has done to ensure his freedom. And two, for the Amish, they don't deserve America if they can't recognize the sacrifices made on their behalf to allow them to till the earth, worship as they choose, and live in community as they so desire. However, they all showed a total lack of respect for what I believe and demonstrate in the front of my house. I recognize people do work on Memorial Day, but I personally don't think that it's necessary to disrupt the residential area on Memorial Day. Then they did pour the concrete until Friday, so there was plenty of time to get in there before the end of the week. I have the MIA and POW flag on the flagpole, and on those are the words, "You are not forgotten." Well, in this case, they have been forgotten. That, to me, shows a total lack of respect for those who died and the lack of opportunity for those who do remember or have made life commitments to America. I am enlisted as indefinite on my military ID card. Therefore, I could be activated at any time. At my age of 80 is unlikely, but it is possible. I ask, can anyone of them say the same? It is sure not the Amish. And anyone who has not served should button their lip and respect those who did. Their total actions and disrespect grew in my whole day. Men and women have sacrificed their lives, and for what? Ungrateful people. I have held the bodies of the dying and held memorial services for others. I know firsthand the sacrifices that have been made. Moving on. As you know, I needed to downsize because of my wife's handicap. She needed to be on one floor. The villa seemed to be the answer to those needs. Now I'm here, I get rejection after rejection by Mr. Miglerini. And for all my requests for improvements around the house and for routes, mobility, and convenience, this, to me, is a total disgrace to the developer, the builder, and the community. Technically, this administration is ashamed of all the lack of compassion and goodwill towards its residents, including Al, who has moved out and left an empty house. All of which was to feather Mr. Miglerini's ambition and its administration's own personal agenda, shouting, "Save Monarch Miglerini." This is a new trend in America from the presence, from the President of the United States right down to the local government. Pyrrany and dictatorship. I personally don't understand the mindset of those who support Mr. Miglerini. He who is presently costing the taxpayers and the city frivolous lawsuits and every day the cost increasing. Mr. Miglerini and the supporters, get off, get off your high horse. Show some respect for the city and be reasonable. As for me, I guess everyone is trying to outlive me or my presence, just like with Al, my old neighbor. Under the present circumstances, it's not likely to happen, even at my age of 80, unless Miglerini gets involved with some common sense and some compassion. Using Joe Miggs' words to me on TV, "If," Mr. Miglerini, instead of my name, "could see reason." See reason, Mr. Miglerini. Be responsible. Buy me out on my terms and my satisfaction, and I'll be gone. Thank you.
Fred?
There's a copy.
Yes, I would like a copy of that. Maybe I can follow up on some of those items for you.
That'd be fine.
And we actually let you talk a little longer, out of respect for you.
How long can I speak?
A while.
I'll sort of...
All right. No, you don't. It's, you deserve your time, and I'm not going to take that from you. All right. Next, we have Barb DeLucaus. Hi, Barb.
Well, I started to write a letter to the city, and I decided this would be more appropriate to come to council meeting. I wanted to thank everyone that was involved in putting on this Spirit Festival, especially for old timers that were involved with Fun Fest. It was nice to see a community gathering again, and I was so impressed with where it And because I'm not a rider and I have no little kids with me, I walked around and looked. I liked how the rides were set up and the people that, from whatever company you used, were dressed appropriately. I can remember at Fun Fest, it was a little scary sometimes. I liked the idea of not 50 food vendors. Of course, the lines got a little long, but I didn't hear anybody complaining either. I liked where the entertainment was. I liked the idea of the beer tent. And no, I did not see anybody walking around drunk, fighting, falling down. And it was nice. It was by the entertainment. I wanted to thank everyone that was involved in putting this together. I wanted to thank our police department for keeping track of everybody and doing a wonderful job. I want to thank our fire department for being there and transporting people back and forth. It was nice. Yes, I'm getting older. It's harder to walk across the yard. You know? I wanted to thank the people from the Recreation Center. What a nice job they did. The grounds were pretty and beautiful and... I just can't compliment everybody enough. I saw my old friends, my new friends. I made new friends. I saw people with their grandchildren, their children. I was amazed at the amount, there were more people there than even at the Fun Fest, and it was a good way to get the community back together. Everyone said, "This was wonderful. I mean, we should be able to have this like three times in the summer." Right. Let them work on it. I think it was time for the city to bring people together. That's the way the community should be. Bring the people together. Pretty soon, we can start bringing them in here to meetings, and they can voice their opinion. Anyway, I want to thank each and every one of you that was involved in this. It was wonderful. I had a great time, and the fireworks were wonderful. Okay?
Thank you. You're thanking the entire City Hall, really, because every department worked their tails off to do it.
Even people that don't work for the city worked their tails off for it. And it was incredible.
We also have a young man sitting up on this bench that really pushed for this to happen, and I'd like to acknowledge to Nick Molnar, thank you, because he stood his ground and said, "Well, if we have enough money or not, we need to start having community get-togethers."
It brought the community together.
Yes, it did.
Old people met young people. Neighbor, I, this is terrible to say, but somebody's been my neighbor right around the corner from me for probably 15 years. I met them up there at the corner.
See that?
Yeah.
It's a good thing, and thank you. All right. Next on the list is Kevin. Kevin?
Thank you for your time. I'll be brief. My name is Kevin Bilkey. I live at 7995 Brook Circle. That's in the Lake Forest Estates. I'm here tonight to ask that our lights that have been down for at least six months be fixed immediately. We also have lights that have been out for over a year. Being the HOA president of the development, I have now fielded over 15 to 20 emails about these lights, and I think it's time for me to come up here and complain about it. Not sure why they have not been fixed, but it doesn't matter to me why. I just want them fixed. So tomorrow, I will email you where the lights are out, and I think that everyone knows right now where the lights, because they're covered up with cones, and it looks bad, and we'd like them fixed, so...
Streetlights?
There are lights, like the one outside of City Hall, that are gone. And we'll see which ones get fixed first. Ours have been out since at least December. Thank you for your time.
What kind of lights, Kevin? I want to make sure, streetlights?
They are light poles.
Light poles?
Poles, yes.
All right.
And then we have lights that are out on those poles that have been out for over a year. I emailed this, I emailed everybody and said, "Hey, I know the two lights are down. Where else?" And I've gotten six emails back about different spots that have lights, and most of them were, "This light has been out for over a year." So I have all the addresses where the lights are, and I'll email them to you and to everybody else here, so you all have them, so we all know. You guys probably don't drive through my neighborhood at night, so you probably don't know which lights are out, but there are, you know, they should be fixed by now.
All right, Kevin.
So any other questions?
Jim? Any question?
Everything that's ever reported to it, like this light out here that he's talking about, probably the one on Whispering Woods, they have been worked. You know, we have to depend on Ohio Edison to complete all these lights. And whenever a light's reported to us, it gets to Sharon, and it's immediately reported to Ohio Edison. And in most areas, they're completed. Now, in Lake Forest, the lights that were reported out to us, those are the ones we fix. Now, what you're telling me now is there's many more, and I would agree...
There are two light poles that are down.
Yes.
And then there's just, and that's the original reason why I was coming tonight, to ask for them to be fixed. So I sent out an email to the neighborhood and said, "What else concerning the lights?" And then I got at least five more back. So that's...
Right. And soon as you give me that, it'll be presented to Ohio Edison, because then we'll know about it, and they will take care of it. You know, each, and as far as the other ones, sometimes they were from accidents. We have to go through the whole insurance process, which could take sometimes months. So we do it. This outside, this took three months. This outside, this took three months, and I'm finally getting it. There's one at the rec center. That took over three months. We're finally getting it. So once we get them, we'll fix them.
Can you update me where we're at with getting the lights, so I can email people back?
Yes.
Okay.
And as far as what you have, I would appreciate to have that, because then we'll report them.
Okay.
If they don't come to us, we don't know.
That's understandable.
You know, and I mean, we've gotten them from other recs at Park Lodge. He lets me know when they're out, and we fix them. I need the same thing from you.
I will email you from the Winking lizard. Thank you.
Thank you. You can do that, too. Thank you.
Okay. That handles our public comments this evening, so we're going to move right into pending and/or new legislation, starting with ordinance number forty-five, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance forty-five, two thousand fourteen, for its third reading.
An emergency ordinance providing for the review of the charter by the Charter Review Commission, fixing its duties and establishing a procedure for the review.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer amendments to the ordinance forty-five, two thousand fourteen in section one, starting with the word "after" being appointed, striking all of that to the end of section one. In section six, I'd like to change three fifths to two thirds of its members concurring in the first sentence and in the final sentence, again, two thirds substituted for three fifths.
Need a motion to accept.
I'll second the amendment.
All right. Now, we have an amended, and I'm only hesitating because our law department has informed me that we need another piece of legislation. Joe, are these amendments going to be instead of that?
No. Your legislation that you proposed are two additional ordinances which are not compatible with this one. So, as I understand it, section one, the motion was to change what, Josephine?
She's changing the... Striking out the sentence.
After being appointed?
Right. After...
Is that in seven-day language?
Right. I have both of the ordinance that you prepared in front of me. Do you want them?
Yeah. So that amendment does not fix the problem with section one, which is contrary to the charter. I haven't...
Is there a way we could table this to discuss it at the next meeting? Because we've never heard these amendments, never knew the amendments. We've never discussed them. I have no idea what this is. I think it would only be fair for us to assure that we're meeting the charter, that we all understand and agree with it, and I've never heard it. I don't think it's fair to make an amendment from the floor without everyone knowing about it. So...
A motion to table is always in order.
Table or hold at second reading?
Whichever.
I'd hold it at... Where are we at? Second?
Second.
I'd hold it at second until we can discuss this.
Oh, that's after...
And actually, well, it's...
It's on the reading. It's first, actually. No.
Ms. Hannekin just offered it for its third, so it needed a second, so now it's at its third reading.
Mr. Engle, second.
She offered the amendment, and you're tabling the amendment?
I'm saying we just hold the entire piece of legislation of forty-five at second reading until we can see what these amendments are. I have no idea what it is. So I don't know what I'm voting for on to amending when I've never seen it before. And to assure that this piece of legislation, plus the other two that were presented, do we have the right pieces of legislation together to assure that we're meeting the charter? I don't know where the amendment came from, why it's only being presented on the Diaz, wasn't given to us beforehand.
We usually don't give amendments beforehand, I don't believe.
Well, generally, we would discuss something that would change the operation while we're doing it.
This is pretty big drastic.
I don't... Without it in front of me, it's hard for me to make a decision on it, because I don't know what you're trying to accomplish.
This whole work session, and we'll have Mr. Deemer come or someone from his office, and when do you want to schedule it? Work this out. Is that appropriate for everybody?
I just need an explanation of what you're trying to accomplish. I think you can hold till the next meeting.
Well, then we're going to have the same problem.
Well, then abolish the amendment. We can pass the charter review, and then we can come back and readdress it. Until I understand what you're trying to accomplish, I can't vote on it.
Well, that's why I'd like to have a work session, so we can talk all these things out.
My understanding was that the president of council spoke with Mr. Deemer, and these were the amendments that I was to make.
I was... I did talk with Mr. Deemer, and I did think that these are the things that we needed to correct. If there are more things that need to be correct, Mr. Deemer, please tell me, and I'll accept the responsibility. I'm not staying in charge of responsibility.
As I indicated, I drafted the legislation the way it's been drafted the past twenty-five years. The mayor submitted them. They... At the last meeting, they did not get a reading. Everyone got a counsel of those. It's the way the charter reads exactly, and those two are the pieces that should be done. This ordinance introduced by Sylvia is contrary to the charter, and these amendments she's making fixes a couple of those things, but not the critical ones.
Which are the... Would you send me an email on the critical ones, so we can get this worked out? I'm sorry, Joe.
Sure. We're proceeding with this, and we will amend it. I don't have a problem holding it for a work session. I thought it had been worked out. Appears it's not. So as far as I can see, I withdraw the third reading, and I will say, "Let's keep it at second." Can we have a...
Do we want to... Josephine, do you have a calendar?
I think I do.
Oh, I guess we all have a calendar on our iPad.
Yeah.
Joe, while we're looking up a date, do we need to pass both those pieces of legislation? I'm confused on that.
The other is the appointment, sir.
Yeah, we'll deal with that.
Yeah, yes.
In your mind, we need to pass two?
Yes. This ordinance, though, does not comply.
Here's the calendar.
The two you introduced do comply.
Today's the twelfth.
Okay. So the two are...
So there's three total.
Should be the ones that are being voted on.
Correct.
No, sir.
How about Wednesday, the nineteenth? Or Thursday, the nineteenth? Is that available for a work session?
Yes.
I'm okay.
Yep.
Yep, yep. Everybody good?
Yep.
All right.
What time?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
Josephine, be sure to send us emails, since some of us forget. We won't mention who forgets.
All right. So could you give it its second...
We just hold it.
We're just holding it, so we'll move on to...
And I read it already, so...
All right. We'll move on to ordinance...
Before we move on, could we...
Go ahead.
Could I just ask to indulge that you send us a copy of the amendments that you're proposing, so we could read them before the work session?
Sure. I have the... I do that.
And then if someone could resend us the two that have been proposed, and that way we have everything together.
Josephine will do that, right, Josephine?
I will.
Thank you.
Ready to move on? All right. We'll go to ordinance number forty-seven dash two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance forty-seven, two thousand fourteen, for its second reading by title only.
An emergency ordinance amending sections one eighty-one oh three A, one eighty-one oh four, one eighty-one oh six A, and one eighty-one fourteen A of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia, Ohio, in order to increase the city's current income tax rate to that which existed last year, two thousand thirteen, at two and one-quarter percent for road improvements and stormwater projects, and providing for a one-hundred percent tax credit, and submitting the same to the electors on November fourth, two thousand fourteen.
All right. Before we move on, Bill, this is in reference to what you were talking about. This is a funding mechanism with dedicated funds for roads for forever. Actually, it won't ever be revoked. It's not capped. It's an increase in the city income tax. So of course, that means that the elderly won't have to pay it, those who are not working, those who are handicapped and not working. So this particular ordinance, all's we're doing here is voting to put it on the ballot for the residents to decide. All right? Moving on. Ordinance number fifty-six, two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance fifty-six, two thousand fourteen, for its second reading by title only.
An ordinance appropriating funds for use by the surface department for the road repair at three eighty-three Janes Lane.
All right. Moving on to ordinance fifty-seven, two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance fifty-seven, two thousand fourteen, for its second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending the two thousand fourteen annual appropriations ordinance twenty-six, two thousand fourteen, transferring certain funds from one oh one, one oh one to one oh one, two oh one.
Moving on. Ordinance number sixty, two thousand fourteen.
Okay. An ordinance... Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance sixty, two thousand fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading. Be title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the two thousand fourteen annual appropriations ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand fourteen, and this is in regards to various funds.
Quick explanation. Scott?
Yes, sir. One of the things on the line item was we didn't have enough money for the cemetery subdivision assessment, which they just met a couple of weeks ago. We actually pay forty-three point five percent of the operation and maintenance of the cemetery. The other communities, Northfield, Northfield Center, and Sagamore Hills, also contribute based on their property assessment. Our price went up. Last year, we paid fifty-five thousand, six forty-two to the group. This year, it was actually sixty-one, six ninety-four. Then I was short on the appropriation, four thousand, one ninety-four. Also included in that was we're going to have to have a civil service test for the fire department soon. I needed two thousand dollars to be put into professional services. And then we did receive a small donation from Sears for the fire department, and we want to recognize that and also be able to put in a line item, so the fire department will buy supplies, materials, and then be able to recognize Sears for that generous
Thank you. What's your pleasure?
Sorry. I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number sixty, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance number sixty, two thousand fourteen passes. Moving on to resolution sixty-one, two thousand fourteen.
Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number sixty-one, two thousand fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A resolution allowing the mayor to apply for federal congestion mitigation air quality funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMATS, to upgrade the city of Macedonia's signal system and to approve the Highland Road and Valley View intersection and declaring an emergency.
And Nick, would you take the microphone and give a real quick synopsis?
Yeah, so the two projects, one is a citywide signal upgrade, and that would replace and upgrade approximately seventeen of the city's signals. The second project is an intersection improvement at Valley View and East Highland Road. That would add left turn lanes at the north and south leg of the intersection, as well as a new signal.
All right. One of the reasons why the city wants to replace lights is a very, very good one. Just think of those bad, bad storms when the power goes out, and we have an officer in the intersection directing traffic, and visibility's poor. It's raining. It's snowing real bad. These are LED lights. They're battery-operated. They have the ability to keep running even when the power goes out. You'll see your lights will still work, so we can have less accidents. This is a great thing. They're preempted. When there's a fire vehicle, any kind of emergency vehicle coming, it turns the light green for them. So this is good stuff. This is what we need to do to be in the next century. We're still back in the nineteen hundreds, right?
Correct.
All right. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we pass and post according to law, resolution number sixty-one, two thousand fourteen, please.
Second.
I just have a question here before we vote. Are we... Do we need to suspend the rules on these things?
And why is that? You had it in your packet.
No, we did.
We did. You did the one, two, three. We went through that.
All in favor?
Yeah.
This was in there.
Yeah. I thought you were... Yeah, talking about that.
What's your pleasure?
I already did.
Oh, you did that.
Yeah, we already had a second.
All right. Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-one, two thousand fourteen passes. That's the good news. The bad news is we're not guaranteed to get this money. We're applying for it, just so everybody's aware of that, but we do need permission from council to do that. Ordinance number sixty-two, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-two, two thousand fourteen, by title... For its first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending one twenty... Excuse me. Amending sections one twenty-one oh two D, one twenty-one oh two Q, one twenty-three oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia in order to conform with the most recent version of the charter.
I'm confused. I thought we were going to have a third reading.
I think some people had some questions, and maybe they wanted to hold it at first reading, and I don't think there's a problem. If we want to discuss it at the next week's work session, it's kind of a legal issue, so Mr. Deemer will be hot and ready to discuss it. Right, Mr. Deemer?
No problemo.
First reading, please, Ms. R. C. C.
I did, sir.
All right.
And you're not...
We're way ahead of you.
We did agree to one, two, three in the room, except for one person. So that's okay.
Yeah.
Ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance sixty-three, two thousand and fourteen, for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Brandon Heisler to the position of full-time police officer.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance sixty-three, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to ordinance sixty-four, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand and fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Richard Lee to the position of full-time police officer.
And what's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand and fourteen, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
64, 2014 passes. Welcome those officers first, please, John. Resolution 65, 2014.
I'd like to offer resolution 65, 2014, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
A resolution, oh, it's spelled out, confirming the reappointment of Anna Haidak to the Board of Zoning and Building Code Appeals.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law resolution 65, 2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
I'd like to just provide an explanation before I vote. I have no particular concern about this individual, but I do believe that we should be bringing in new people rather than simply reappointing people time after time. So I'm going to vote no on this.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Resolution 65 dash 2014 passes. Resolution 66, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution 66, 2014, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
A resolution confirming the reappointment of Mike Menhart to the Civil Service Commission.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that, let's see, this is that we, are we already at the point where we have a resolution? Pass and post according to law, resolution 67, 2014.
Second.
66.
Roll call, 66, yes.
Sixty, excuse me, 66.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Same comment as before. I think we need to start moving with new folks. I would vote no on this.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Resolution 66, 2014 passes. Just so we have a little bit of clarity, these are appointments by the mayor. In a lot of these instances, for instance, when you're talking about the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals here this evening, and it's a lot of work. You have to know a lot about the codified ordinances, what's allowed in the city. Experience is golden, and if you have it where it's working as a well-oiled machine, I ask to reappoint people. Please, stop, Tina. So that's why we reappoint. We reappoint because we know what to expect. Board of Zoning Appeals, Civil Service, we're dealing with very important things, and these people have done a great job. Moving on to resolution number 67, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 67, 2014, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
A resolution confirming the reappointment of Bob Hopkins to the Planning Commission.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post resolution number 67, 2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Resolution 67, 2014 passes. Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the Director of Finance to accept on behalf of the City of Macedonia's Fire Department Fund 101 dot 222, one hundred and forty-eight dollars from donations raised by Macedonia Sears and Hometown Outlet during the holiday salute-to-local-heroes charity campaign for the purpose of providing funding for a variety of firehouse needs, items, or programs.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Are there any other motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion endorsing the submission by the Longwood Manor Historical Society to the Ohio Site Preservation Advisory Board, the application for placing Longwood Manor on the National Registry of Historic Places.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, are there any other motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go out to bid for the roads of Air Lane and Westwood and for a full-depth repair program.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any other motions?
Mayor, I'd like to move eighty-three thousand dollars from the general fund into Fund 401, 4015612. That would be for stormwater projects on Gloria and Eileen totaling forty thousand dollars. Black Hawk and Aracoy, twenty-five thousand dollars. Crossovers for Navajo Cherokee, Bruce and Blueberry, Bonnie and Barpdale, North and South, Roseland and Brookdale, Laurel and Barpdale, and Three on Mimosa totaling eighteen thousand dollars.
What's that total up to?
The total was eighty-three thousand. That's what we have, which we've talked about in finance, and we got today as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. All right, now you can't, do you have it in front of you? We're ready to offer it. What's your pleasure, Nick?
I move that we pass and post the amendment.
What amendment?
Wait a minute.
No, you did it. You made the motion already to move it.
We already did it. We're already done.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good, yeah, all in favor?
Threw me off.
But you have to vote on the amendment.
You asked all in favor, and there were no names.
There was no amendment.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Mayor, I'd like to pull ordinance number 38, 2014, from the table for its third vote by title only.
You already had a third reading, sir. You had a third reading at the last meeting.
All right, then for another reading by title only?
Would it be associated with a vote?
No, you had the third reading, so now you're offering it. You're taking it off.
It's still, it's still on third reading, so he's just motioned to take it off the table.
Yeah.
I make a motion to take ordinance 38 and 39 from the table.
Needed a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Third reading.
He had the third reading.
Just motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, Nick.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 38, 2014.
And 39, Nick.
And 39. Well, we'll do one at a time.
They have to be one at a time.
38 is for Air Lane.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Before I vote, I'm explaining, we've already offered, sent these out to bids, and we're putting, we're appropriating the money, but we're still waiting on the bids, and we still have to approve the contract. I think that the voters should know that while we're making this appropriation. And I'll vote yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes, let me make a comment before I vote. We've had a lot of discussion about these roads. These are the top two roads that were on the repair list, and we've also had a number of other things that we've made a motion to get bids on, including full-depth repairs, and other items such as crossover pipes on Mimosa and some other places, and to do some work on stormwater. And the reason that we're able to do that is that by projection, we're at least four percent above what Rita projected that we would have. In other words, we started the year with an estimate from Rita that we would have 1.3 million less than last year. We actually, our projection at this point is that we will have 300,000 more than we expected from Rita. And that's just what we were waiting for when we said we were holding off on making a decision. The reason for it was very simple. We needed to know what our revenue picture was going to be. I will say this, my own, I did another set of numbers on this today myself, and I believe the potential would be that we would have perhaps another, up to five percent more than was projected by Rita, which would give us about $400,000. All by way of explanation, I believe we have enough money to pay for this at this point, so I'm voting yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance number 38 dash 2014 passes. Ordinance number 39 dash 2014.
I'd like to pull ordinance 39, 2014. All right, well, somebody help me out here.
It's okay, it's off the table. Just motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt ordinance 39, 2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes, with the same explanation that we'd said in the previous piece of legislation.
Yes, same comments.
Mr. Molnar?
Just to give a little bit of the background with these two, we've had some pretty strong debates as to where we were going to go and how we were going to handle this. A lot of different ideas were kicked around to divert funding in different ways to different roads, but these are our top two worst roads, and by far, we're in desperate need of these repairs, full-depth restoration repairs, not a full-depth repair, a full-depth restoration. So this is a long time coming, and I know the folks that live on these roads will be ecstatic. So with an enthusiastic yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
As far as these two pieces go, ordinance number 39 passes and 38. We have to keep in mind that even with passing these two ordinances, even with looking at full-depth repairs, the city's still going to have two and a half million dollars carryover. That's the target. If we would have done these repairs, we would have had still two, over $2 million worth. So we're being ultra-conservative at least. All right, is there any other motions or legislative actions? Correspondents from the clerk.
Dear Chief Golden, last Friday, I made a bonehead move of locking my keys in my car at the Speedway in Highland. This is, this is a cute one, particularly since who it's from. Now, even being sure if police still perform the public service anymore and reluctant to pull an officer off patrol, I was left with little choice at the time, especially considering the one-hour wait and excessive charge for roadside assistance. After a pleasant and apologetic exchange with dispatch Officer Schneider, and that would be badge 11, appeared and took care of the problem, all within a period of fifteen minutes or so from the time I contacted your department. Additionally, he was nothing but professional and courteous. While I understand this is part of his job, so is risking your life every day for little things, and I just wanted to note my appreciation. Gratefully, David Kraus, Esquire.
Why'd you look at the lawyers when you said that? I think we should be insulted, Mr. Deemer.
Gotta give us a shout.
Yeah. So typical, I think, that's.
Put her husband's one, too.
So typical.
And it's good to know that our policemen can break into cars. We love to know their skills are honed.
Is there any other correspondence?
No, sir.
All right, moving into the mayor's report. We've had some very, very busy times recently. Just last Friday, I was at the regional summit meeting of Building One America. I guess you could consider this a lobbying group that works in Washington to promote their issues to legislators. The difference with this group is, rather than representing a very rich business client or special interest group, it represents us. The group is focused on middle-class America and its survival in the real world of here and now. If you really think about Macedonia, you see a melting pot. Every race, every religion, and people of every walk alike, we epitomize middle-class America. The main speaker was former Congressman Steve LaTuret, and he even mentioned us in how we benefited economically with monies that came from him as an earmark and built the 82 Bridge. Those first federal dollars let us widen the road and remove a bridge. The transportation bill that we got those federal dollars from is up for renewal. And rather than come to grips with funding it as a user tax should, the funding for the transportation bill comes from gas tax, so that's called a user tax. The federal legislators are talking about funding it by doing away with Saturday mail delivery. This is unacceptable to the former congressman, and it should be for you and I, too. It's time for a reality check in Washington, get us back on course. The transportation bill is funded by gas tax. That is why the amount it does out to encourage and protect economic development every year diminishes. If you think about it, in the 1970s, the government ordered the auto manufacturers to develop cars, diminishing their use of gas. They doled out incentives to emphasize the better the gas mileage was, the more those automobile companies could count on getting federal money in rebates or incentives. In retrospect, that's equivalent to sawing off the branch you're sitting on. To complicate matters even more, the oil companies chose to join forces and rapist at the pumps. So every year, that big chunk of change from the gas tax has changed from a river to a trickle. So as the gas has disappeared and continues, the gas tax disappears and continues to disappear, we're becoming a nation of old and perhaps dangerous infrastructure. And this just goes back to what we're talking about in Macedonia, so it's across the country. The federal gas tax has not changed since 1995. What proportion of gas was it then? I bet you we were paying a buck a gallon or less, and it changed five cents, so that's not a whole big amount. It's staggering that someone was actually asleep at the switch while the country's means of supporting such a vital industry and necessary funding mechanism faded away. To make matters even worse, the federal government has actually paid huge incentives to develop automobiles that don't burn fossil fuel. So now we have cars that run on ethanol, ethanol, natural combust gas, liquid propane, and finally, electricity. It's all well and good, but these cars pay nothing towards our roads and bridges, yet they still use them like those of us, including me, who use gas. It's time for our officials in Washington to man up. Make sure that the funding mechanism is in place to feed something that could give our economy the boost it needs. Put the country back to work fixing our roads and bridges. It worked in Macedonia with increased city income tax fueling our services while making us more accessible to the world. It's not rocket science. It's just basically pay the dance or send home the musicians. Two weeks ago, I was in Washington. I met with Congressman Joyce Friday morning, May 30th, to give him all of the information about the Ledge Road Bridge, including the three TV spots that I have collected so far. Also in my packet was the ruling from the head of ODOT Bridge Structural Engineer that the bridge was in violation of Ohio Revised Code specifically 4955.23 and 4955.24. The Ohio Revised Code specifically says it's against the law for matter to fall from the bridge onto a roadway that passes through the bridge. The next part states that Norfolk Southern, for each day during the failure or violation, shall forfeit to the city $100 to be recovered in a civil action in the city's name against the owner-operator of such railroad. We have a fencing on that bridge, but there's still rocks falling. We still have to go there and clean. We still are constantly worried that a big one's going to take everything down, and more than anything else, we worry about derailment, because they cannot tell us the structural integrity of the Ledge Road Bridge. Congressman Joyce was very concerned. His staff will be looking into it, and that's one of the best staffs in Washington. But I'd like to thank two residents, Al Noe and Dan Ehrman. Their powerful letters to Norfolk Southern that they sent to me, I was copied, were given to the congressman and Norfolk Southern, because I did meet with people from Norfolk Southern. I met with a young lady called Ailsa Van Dobernack. She was representing the railroad, and my concerns are now sent to her, because I gave the congressman everything on a CD that we burned. I gave her a copy. Now, we wait. I also testified at Building One America meeting in Washington concerning the needs of middle-class American cities to have a strong, powerful, and properly-funded transportation bill. All we can do is be the squeaky wheel. Our first-ever community guide will be distributed through the city over the next few days. A copy will be sent to every household and business in Macedonia, starting Friday the thirteenth. This is an exciting showcase of our community. It really is great for us to be doing this because other communities have done it, and now Macedonia is in the same class, telling the world about how good it is to be here. On Sunday, June fifteenth, the Nerdoni Hills Annual Concert in the Park will be held at six P.M. On Thursday, June nineteenth, at six P.M., tune into Channel Five. The results of the Building Better Communities Award will be announced. One of those that were participating streets or communities will be announced that night. And then they're going to do a big spiel about how good it is living here in Macedonia and on their street. Thank you to everyone for making our comeback event, The Spirit of Macedonia, a tremendous success. Naming all involved would be at least three pages. The only way to say it is I'm very proud of our team, the employees, the residents of the city of Macedonia. We definitely have the spirit. Have a great summer because we're going to be taking some summer recesses here, so we'll only be having one meeting a month. All right, moving on to the committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, we did have a finance committee meeting on June tenth at seven P.M. here in City Hall. That is where we went through a lot of discussion of the changes that we are getting and projections for the Rita Collection Report. And I have to say, I'd like to compliment Scott Schwab for doing a great job looking through where we were trying to do an updated projection. And I looked at this myself in more detail after that meeting, and I have to say, it's really sound. One of the things that I will tell you is that, for example, that we are actually collecting above the median for every year except for last year. So we're collecting at such a high rate that our potential is for additional revenue. We're hoping that's going to happen. But I have to say, that's a very great job on Scott's part, and I appreciate it. Also, we did get feedback from Mr. DiGutano, which I want to thank him for, concerning the stormwater and the crossover pipe issues and the full-depth repair issues that we discussed the other night. So that, as a total package, I think we can move forward with, with a really good program to improve Macedonia's streets, and they are in serious condition, as Bill Jenkins said earlier. So I'm really happy with what we're doing, and I think we will do some more if we can. So appreciate it, thank you very much.
Are there any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Macedonia Planning Commission meeting, had a special meeting on June ninth, two thousand fourteen, at five-thirty. There was a proposed signage for Center Point Plaza at ninety-eight thirty-six Valleyview Road. Also proposed six parking light poles for Nerdonia Hills City Schools at eight zero zero six South Bedford Road. Our next meeting is scheduled for this Monday, which is June sixteenth. Yeah, it's already sixteenth. My God, this month wins. At two thousand fourteen, at five-thirty, and we have several items on the agenda. A proposal to park U-Haul vehicles on property for rent for Space Place Macedonia LLC at eighty-nine forty-five South Freeway Drive. And also, a proposed final site plan, new self-storage building for Space Place Macedonia LLC, eighty-nine forty-five South Freeway Drive. A proposed sign replacement for Stuff and Puff at seven-seven-five East Aurora Road. A proposed alteration to site plan to include revised sidewalk alignment for Design Molded Plastics at eighty-two seventy-two Bavaria Road. A proposed signage change for Momentum Christian Church at eighty-two-ten seventeen-seventeen East Aurora Road. A proposed modification for Macedonia Commons at eighty-two-ten Macedonia Commons Boulevard. A proposed revision to Macedonia Commons sign plan for Macedonia Commons at eighty-two-ten Macedonia Commons Boulevard. And a proposed conditional site plan approval for Highland Point Parkway. And also, that will be at for right this time, and that's at five-thirty. And that's this Monday, June sixteenth. And then following that, our next scheduled meeting will be July twenty-first, two thousand fourteen. That's all.
Thank you. As you can see, some of these commissions have really an overload of work, and that's where experience comes in. And it's handy to have people that can do the amount of work that will be accomplished next Monday. Moving on, any other committee reports? Yes?
Parks and Recreation, first of all, we'd like to say thank you to everyone, including Mr. Molnar did drive the cart periodically, too, to assist people getting into there. The committee now is focused on where do we go in the future? We're looking at how do we want to see the park develop? I've also challenged them that this is not just Longwood Park, we also need to look at Memorial and Sugar Bush. There kind of been the forgotten parks. Memorial, we're probably going to have to wait to really put a final plan together until the entire change is made with the on-ramp, but it's time to put those also on there. We've talked a lot about with Mr. DiGutano, met him with Sugar Bush, about what are the things that we need to look at there? It's a local park that has the ability for residents to walk to on sidewalks, but it's kind of been the lost jewel. So that's, I'll be forthcoming. One of the things we're talking about is putting together a survey to get, obviously, your feedback of what do you want to see in your parks, what do you want to see going further? You know, we've heard ideas from outdoor pools to gymnasiums to a wading pool, so we just really, and basketball courts. Now, the ones up at Sugar Bush don't really exist. They kind of decayed and deprived people who like to play basketball. So keep looking forward to it. The board will be getting together and getting that out to you, the public. It's your parks, those are your parks, we need your input. Thank you.
Very good. All right, any other committee reports? Hearing none. Jim?
Thanks, Mayor. For those, anyone interested, on July twelfth, Saturday, nine A.M. to twelve P.M., we're going to do the shredding again. And so, that's the date. I'm telling you now because we won't have another council meeting until July twenty-fourth. So if you have anything you need to get rid of, any documents, that's the date to do it. And I was suggesting there early, last time there was something like three hundred and sixty cars. So a little bit of traffic, and this, we're expecting it to be a little bit bigger this year. And also, we're working right now with Republic, as you know, Mayor, our rubbish hauler, and we're considering the five-year option on there, and they have given Exhibit A and an Exhibit B to the attorneys, to the law firm, to check it out for us. And at this meeting that you're going to have, Mr. Engel, would it be possible for us to discuss that Republic options that they're willing to offer? Because we might be able to maybe just, you know, go with their options and extend the contract, maybe not having to go out for bid. It's pretty nice, it's a pretty nice option. Okay, thank you.
Is everybody happy with talking about the bid at the meeting? We'll see you there.
Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to let you know that on next Thursday, June nineteenth, Mayor and I, possibly Nick or Jackie, will be meeting with the D.O.E.S., and we're going to be discussing, doing, there's five exposed sewer lines in our Indian Creek. Last year, one was damaged when a rock slid down, so this is something that we're going to discuss, and hopefully, we can get that taken care of and repaired. And what's interesting is they're also want to work with us on the Sioux culvert. So we're going to meet with them, like I said, next Thursday, and hopefully, maybe we might be able to get something together with that because that, that's becoming a real project there because the water doesn't flow through the pipes anymore, flows under. And it won't take much to make it worse than what it already is. And then, other than that, though, we're basically trying to get back on track after the, the Spirit of Macedonia took a lot of time, and a lot of work, but it was worth it. And it was nice to see how happy everybody was. So we're getting back on track with cutting Route Eight, cutting all the areas, starting back up on North Bedford. Hopefully, that won't take long. All the special order headwalls and catch basins will be, will get the final order tomorrow. So Monday, we'll be able, it'll probably only take us a week to two weeks, as long as it doesn't rain anymore, to get that done. And then we're going to move on to these other projects, which, you know, Council is working very hard for us to get the funding to do them. And that's my report.
Good job, compliments. Brian, and I'm sorry, I can't remember his last name.
Brian Schuman.
Brian Schuman needs to be mentioned. Barb, when you were walking through all those rides, there was no electricity there two months ago.
Right.
And they made that happen.
Right, he's an amazing person.
Yes, he is.
He really, I didn't know he was supposed to be in kindergarten.
Well, you know, he does such a quality of work that we have to be inspected. And mention was made to our building commissioner, to Jim, boy, whoever did this really knew what they were doing. So that's the kind of people our service department have. We have excellent, excellent people like Brian, so make sure you thank him for us all, as well as all your men.
Yeah, they did all the, the reason why the park looks so good, too, is because of service. And I have to say it, I'm sorry, I'm their boss, and they, they do really a fine job.
And these culverts are a real problem. Over the last ten years, we've probably done at least sixty of them. I don't know if any of you remember Navajo? Oh, my God, you talk about sinkholes, and we have pipes going under there through those culverts. Culverts are the pipes under the road that carry stormwater, that have been there forever. Some of our community streets are so old, one of them, we were talking about a couple of weeks ago, was nineteen forty-two. All right, so think of any culverts under that road. After years and years of water running through them, they're collapsing, rusting, falling apart. Big deal. And Sioux, Sioux's this far away from being closed, just so everyone's aware.
Yes, it is.
We are that concerned.
If those catch basins fail, there's no way to fix them. So once they fail, we have to cross that bridge, I guess.
And now, we're going to get D.O.E.S. working with us to fix that? That's a good job, Jim. All right, Nick, sitting in for Mike tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. A pre-designed kickoff meeting was, was held this week with ODOT for the two-seventy-one widening. The design build team that was awarded the contract by ODOT consists of the contractor of Great Lakes Construction and the engineering firm they've partnered with is U.R.S. The design has commenced for the project this month. Construction is scheduled to start in fall of this year. The two-seventy-one widening and bridge work's going to be going on for two years. The north ramp relocation will start in the spring of two thousand fifteen, and it's got a deadline in the contract of a sixty-day completion. Following that work, State Route eighty-two widening is scheduled for two thousand sixteen, and noise walls are also scheduled for two thousand sixteen, and the project completion is fall two thousand sixteen.
Good. Thank you. It'll be tough, there'll be a lot of orange barrels.
I have a question, Nick. Was there a, has there been a final number from the right-of-way?
Not a final number yet. They're kicking numbers around that could potentially reach a million dollars for right-of-way acquisition.
That's what I was concerned about, thank you. Because we have five hundred at this point. Okay.
One of the things we have to keep in mind here is that the roadwork is part of a project for, to move the ramp. The project came in fifteen million dollars under what it was scheduled to be. The numbers we used for the projections for what we needed to pay were five hundred thousand dollars from them.
From ODOT.
All right, my thoughts are, you have fifteen million dollars that you don't have to pay for the job, give it to us, we'll see how it plays out. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Next meeting, I'll have legislation for the approved snowplow trucks that we had. We went out to bids, not bids, but quoted from three banks that we normally use, Dollar Bank, First Merit, and Key Bank. And a resident here, Chad Green, had contacted me six months ago and expressed interest anytime we were going to do some equipment leasing or any short-term notes. And he left his card, and I contacted him, and I'm happy as well as he that he came in as a low bid, two-point-four percent interest, where others were, you know, two-point-four-eight, three-point-nine-five, and one over four percent. So when you look at that range from what his bid is to the highest bid, the spread was thirty-seven thousand in interest over five years compared to his bid at seventeen-five, so we saved close to twenty thousand dollars just by happily moving that business to Key Bank, and thank you, Chad, for his work. We do have, I'll have an update for council, and I'll probably email it to you early next week. Everyone's expressed interest again. We had the five-year plan for the rec center, and last year, because of the higher collection of income tax, we ended the fund higher than what we did the previous year. But again, the concerns are, even though the rec center is, the final bond payment will be distributed on two thousand sixteen, in two thousand seventeen, the income tax rolls off half a year. So we'll have half a year collections in two thousand seventeen, and then at that part, at that point in eighteen, it starts to get to be a little bit of a struggle as, even though revenues from the membership have been steadily increasing, and it, it's one of the second highest revenue sources, over five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars yearly, there's going to be a gap there that we're going to probably have to start addressing. So, but by the end of two thousand eighteen, you know, I hate to go out five years, but, you know, you have to do that for analysis because it changes so much. But we're still looking at pretty close to over a half a million dollars in their fund ending, and at that point, a lot of things will change, I'm sure. I wanted to thank everyone. We have the Second Annual Mayor's Fishing Derby coming up this Saturday, and the weather looks excellent for that. That's all funded through O.D.N.R., and we'll have a tent up there, and a little bit bigger event, and want to thank the fire explorers also and the fire team for coming out and helping and assist. We had the membership drive at the rec center, they called in, and we also distributed flyers at the schools, elementary schools, this year, and they had it posted at their, on their website through Dr. Joe Clark. So I want to thank everyone. We had a tremendous response, we had, it filled quickly, we had ninety, and we got twenty people on the waiting list, and they can bring their fishing poles as well, and we'll, and we'll still have extra bait available and some, and some food for them. So even though they, the people that aren't on the waiting list are on the waiting list, we explained that they may not get a pole, but they can obviously come and fish, get some bait, get something to eat. And the other people, though, they'll get a free pole, they'll get a tackle box and some tackle. So it's a nice event that O.D.N.R. sponsors every year, and it's going to continue to grow.
And my compliments for all the work you put into that.
My staff, it's all my staff.
Yeah, well, anyway, you made it happen. I have to also mention that Angela's not here tonight, she's been excused, the poor girl's exhausted. She had such a strain on her for months, actually, and she asked if she could have the evening off, and you can only say to her, for all that you did, thank you, take the evening off. All right, Tim?
Yes, Mayor, some good news. I received a preliminary notification today in the form of an email from Chief Bus from Northwood Village. It appears that we are in line to get a grant for some air packs, SCBA, could be as high as a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the Fire Act grant. Just received it today, so hopefully, we receive official notification within the next couple of days. So we'll be working on that feverishly. I'd like to thank Jason Bus, he's the chief of Northwood Village. This was a regional grant in which he applied and named us in the grant, along with what would be us, Northwood Village, and four other communities that he put into the grant. So we'll all be receiving the same type of air pack, and we'll be working, working on that.
Fantastic. That's Team- That's teamwork. That's very good. And air packs are important to be the same. We had a problem one time where our air packs were different than other people's air packs in an emergency situation. If somebody's air pack is not functioning, it's good to have air packs all the same, correct?
Absolutely. So that the air bottles are interchangeable, and yeah, absolutely.
All right, thanks. John?
Tim, can I ask just one question on the air packs? Does that affect what we allocated for funding for the air packs?
Well, we are working on that. We have to see where that is, and if we, we've already issued a PO for those 10, and we're going to obviously work with that company. This has to be, not necessarily bid out, but it does have to be, go out for some prices to satisfy the federal government and the Fire Act. So I'm hoping that the same company that we purchased them from gets the bid or gets the lowest price, and then we'll be working with them feverishly to be able to back that out, yes.
Okay. All right, that's, I was hoping you were going to say that.
Oh, absolutely. That phone call's already been made.
Very good.
So we're going to do absolutely everything that we can to be able to do that. And we had purchased approximately $68,000 this year to get some air packs because we were low, and we would have had to purchase them over three years to purchase, to fulfill our air pack and replace our air packs that we had. Our air packs were, we received a grant in 2004 to buy all of our current air packs. They're now out of service, being 10 years old, and we were lucky enough to be able to secure this grant with Jason's help to purchase the next set of air packs. Now, we still have grants out there. When we do regional grants, we do something and include them. They do something and include us. So we're keeping our fingers crossed for a new aerial tower, truck, and also some turnout gear. So hopefully, we'll be successful. This was the eighth round. They usually give 40 or 50 rounds until they run out of money. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that we hear more in the future about grants.
It's still a great job of teamwork. John?
No report, Mayor.
Joe?
No report, Mayor.
All right, is there any old business?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just take the time to thank Service Department, Police Department, Fire Department. Obviously, the event was a daunting task that all of your employees worked very hard for and gave up their personal time to be there. For me, at least, I appreciate that, and, you know, it was a great event. I think it was a success to see the look on the children's faces, including my daughter, who went through the firehouse at least a half a dozen times, was never bored with it, loved it. And it was just awesome to see the kids and having fun. But more than anyone, Angela, obviously, put a lot of time and effort into this, and she deserves a lot of credit for what she did, bringing it back and building on that success she was already talking about next year, and some of the things we could do a little bit differently to improve, you know? Chairs for the elderly when, you know, they're having a hard time getting around a concert, whatever that may be. But just to see that drive in her and the excitement was awesome. So I just want to thank everybody and definitely pass it along to all the employees. I know I've already told them, but again, would be nice. So thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Besides Angela, we need to say thanks to John, Alan, and Bill. I don't think they ever slept the whole weekend. And then I tease some of the fire guys. I think they slept in the firehouse because they were there the next morning.
Just let me compliment the selection of the fireworks company. That was one of the most impressive fireworks shows I've seen in a very long time. And there were a lot of people in the crowd who were just saying, ooh, amazing. And I believe that was American Fireworks from Hudson. Was that correct?
Yes.
So compliments to them. They did a great job.
And a great price. I hate to tell you, we had a really good price from them.
Well, I'll tell you what, and every time I see Brian Schuman, by the way, he says, oh, you know, he and my sons graduated the same year, so they know each other. And I think he is doing a great job. I will say this, too, that the, everybody was in a friendly mood, and I went for the, through the firehouse only once, but I was very impressed. So thanks a lot.
I would like to say thank you also to the mayor and staff. And also, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Ken Martin, and Mr. Dave Engel, and Mr. Mike Miller, and Mr. Shane Barker, and myself for, the Spirit of Macedonia, you know, we brought it back. And if we didn't vote for that last year, you know, and nobody's acknowledging past council, and I'd like to acknowledge that, you know, that they were a part of that. So I wanted to say thank you to them, and thanks to everybody who did all the hard work and put, you know, everything into this. And Angela, I hope she feels better. Thanks.
All right, any other old business? New business?
Can I just make one comment? We have some gentlemen in the back row. I know you don't think yourself is that yet, but I think it's something we should recognize. Boy Scouts, you know, those are breeding future leaders back there. And you've sat through the entire meeting. You should be recognized, first of all, for that. And your sponsor, who's with your leader, so could you stand up and just, and I don't know what troop you're from. I don't know where your troop is.
575 Oakland State Department.
Could you stand up so everybody could see you?
Yeah, we, little bit of airtime.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. All right, do I have motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, thank you very much for coming. We'll see you next time.